Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order. Can we have a determination of a quorum, please?
Sarah Savilecak, here. Larry Chesney.
Here.
James Barnes.
Here.
Thomas Bruce.
Here.
Francine Doncic.
Here.
Philip Perrin.
Here.
And Michael Lawson.
Present.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Barnes, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, would you join me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, could we have the ethics law announcement, please?
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, you have received a gift or loan, you have a pecuniary interest, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship, or you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered tonight, then you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And you must furthermore abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd, the appeal process.
Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application fee.
Thank you. We're now at Agenda Item 5, General Public Comment. Do we have any general public comment?
We do, we have Tammy Holst still.
You'll get this copy. Tammy Holst still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee for the record. What you see before you right here is the NRS for tentative maps. Number two, a district board of health which conducts reviews and inspects under this section shall consider all the requirements by law disposal sewer disposable water pollution, water quality, water supply, and facilities. Number four, there should be a letter submitted with this. These are two things, the first two things, 2 and 4, that were not done with the Lemon Valley Heights. Shame on council for advising you to turn around and approve something without having all the proper documentation. Shame on staff for allowing you to do that because they didn't give you the information and they pushed it forward. Then you see 278-0261. This will affect our health and welfare out there, and you guys did it anyway. So before you guys vote on another project, you need to really make sure that your packets and your information from that staff has everything that you need for you to make your findings because you should have not made findings on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Michael Welling.
Good evening, Michael Welling, Red Rock area in the North Valleys. The reason I'm here tonight to comment is that we have items that are still coming before you with regards to build out and adding more properties in the North Valleys. And the fact is, is that Planning, two weeks ago at City, Planning came out and said that they needed to go ahead and do some more calculations and figure things out before they could figure out what the capacities are in the North Valleys. We're at 100% plus right now, also with the Lemon, as you probably well know, with the Lemon Valley pumping facility to possibly go offline this year because they can't get a renewal on their permit. So I'm asking you to consider all of these ramifications that lie before us with regards to water, sewage, and the likes that we still have as much water this year as we had last year, regardless of the amount of evaporation that has taken place in these valleys. I'm asking you to ask Planning to stop coming before you with new projects based on the idea that we have no, zero resources as of today to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No other.
Okay, so I'll be closing public comment. Our next item is possible action to approve the agenda. We have been requested to move Item 8C to the front of our agenda, to our first item to be heard. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to-
Madam Chair, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with a change to move 8C to the beginning.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Commissioner Doncic and seconded by Commissioner Perrin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Action to, a possible action to approve the April 3 draft minutes? Has everybody had an opportunity to review?
Moved to pass a minute.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before we move our discussion?
Yes.
There are some inconsistencies on Pages 16 and 17. And it's a small matter, but I would bring to your attention on the bottom of Page 16, or the middle, a Development Code Amendment where it says the motion carried unanimously with four in favor and three against. That's not unanimous.
That's not unanimous, yeah.
And the same error exists on Page 17 at the top. It also did not carry unanimously. I moved to make those corrections.
Is there a second to?
So seconded.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Lawson and seconded by Commissioner Bruce to amend the minutes as noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So our first item is Item 8C. We could have staff read that into the record, please.
Apologize, one moment, please.
That's okay.
On page. The slide before you tonight is tentative subdivision map case number WTm18004, Lemon Drive Estates, for possible action hearing and discussion to approve a tentative subdivision map for a 98 lot, single-family residential, common open space subdivision. Lot sizes are proposed to range from a minimum size of 5,218 square feet to a maximum size of 10,811 square feet, with an average size of 6,011 square feet. Front yard setbacks are proposed to be reduced from a minimum of 20 feet to a minimum of 10 feet adjacent to a public street or common driveway, and maintain 20 feet in front of each garage. Rear yard setbacks are proposed to be reduced from 20 feet to a minimum of 10 feet. Side yard setbacks are proposed to be reduced from a minimum of eight feet to a minimum of five feet. Required yard, required lot widths are proposed to be reduced from a minimum of 80 feet to a minimum of 75 feet. And here to present from Planning and Building is Senior Planner Roger Pellon.
Thank you. Before your presentation, I'm asking commissioners for disclosures, either ethics or ex parte.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Doncic.
I attended the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board meeting to listen, and then I also received a phone call from a Golden Valley resident because it abuts his property. I didn't know at the time it was his project, and I advised him to contact the project representative or to attend this meeting tonight.
I drove out to try and get an idea really where the property was. No disclosures.
Okay. I too attended the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board just as, for listening.
I also attended the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board.
I made a site visit.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pellon.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Again, for the record, Roger Pellon with Washoe County Planning and Building. Again, this is a tentative subdivision map requesting 98 lots. Each of these are about 5,000 to an average of about 6,000 square feet. This does, being a common open space subdivision, they are requesting reduced setbacks, and in this case, there will actually be clusters of homes. Each one of those with, again, with even smaller setbacks, and smaller lot widths from 80, which would be typical for the medium-density suburban zone, down to 75 for this development. This is located adjacent to Lemon Drive. As shown here on the vicinity map, you see 395 running there across the bottom of the page, and then the subject site with the arrow there. This was, like, I should say, public notice was provided for this hearing to 41 parcels within 900 feet of the proposed subdivision. The North Valley Citizens Advisory Board did consider this item on April 9 and recommended denial. This was sent to the relevant agencies for review, including not only planning, but engineering, water rights, fire, NDEP. We did not receive any recommendations for denial. We did, however, receive a number of letters with conditions of approval. Those conditions of approval have been included in Attachment A to your staff report. On the overhead now, you see a layout of the proposed subdivision. I would note that to the left, which is actually going to be the north in this case, there's kind of a blank area. That is where a retention basin is proposed to be installed to catch the runoff and the additional runoff created by the subdivision. To the right, which would be the south, there is an existing kennel, a dog kennel, Silver State Kennels, that has been in operation for a number of decades. I would like to point out to the top of this, there are two parcels abutting one of the adjacent existing parcels. It is part of the North Valley's area plan that either parcels will match in size or there will be a buffer. So in between, if there's a tentative map approved today before the final map comes in, that will actually have to be reconfigured such that there is a buffer between those parcels and the adjacent existing parcel. This is the proposed development pattern. Again, these clusters of four homes that would share one common driveway. I would note that the setbacks from the common driveway to the garage are proposed to remain at 20 feet. So that's essentially to allow enough room for a car to be parked in front of each of those garages. Stormwater management, as you're all very well aware, is an important consideration, most particularly in Lemon Valley. I would simply like to state that prior to approval of any final map, the hydrology would have to meet all generally applicable code requirements, which does not allow any increase in the stormwater runoff. So they do have a retention basin there. They would capture any additional runoff that is created. By way of development pattern, again, to the top of the page here, there is a large sort of drainage way that runs through, and in fact, when I was out there, was running very deep because I went out on a rainy day. And that will remain essentially in its undisturbed state. There will be some grading done at the edge there, retaining walls. But again, that drainage way will not be impeded. Adjacency. The kennel to the south, the owner and operator of that kennel has been in contact with both myself and with the applicant, and we have included a number of conditions of approval so that the incoming, any new residents, any new incoming property owners will be aware that in fact, there's a kennel there and dogs bark. And the dogs get to run around in the yards during the daytime. So to mitigate that, we have put a condition of approval that there be a sound wall on the south property line, that the south-facing walls of those that are adjacent would have sound attenuating measures in the walls and sound attenuation in the windows themselves, that there would be a disclosure on title documents, there'd be a disclosure on all the final maps, and that there would be additional landscaping placed, which would again help to sort of buffer. In addition to that, this site is lower than the kennel. So with a six-foot wall on the property line, that will actually put it substantially above the elevation where any homes would be proposed. I made a mistake in the conditions of approval. O is redundant and was actually an earlier version. It has been replaced by Condition 1FF. So I would ask that, should you choose to approve this at the conclusion of your hearing, that that would include a statement that Condition 1O is being deleted. The development is proposed to be on the flatter areas. There are steeper areas, again, across that drainage way that are being left in their natural state. The grading for the project will be required to comply with all of the, again, generally applicable requirements of Article 438, and that will actually include no slopes greater than 10 feet in exposed height. So that retention basin there will actually be required to be a retaining wall sort of around the top that will sort of push that down a little further so that the slope itself is 10 feet or less. This subdivision is proposed to be served by both community water system and community sewer system. We received conditions of approval from the engineering division, and of course, they are the ones that determine whether or not there is sewer capacity or not. So there is. If there were not, we would have received a recommendation of denial. I'm sorry, I did it again. Thank you. The findings required for approval of a tentative subdivision map are included on Pages 12 through 14 of your staff report. It is the opinion of staff that all of those findings can be made in this case. Again, those agencies which reviewed recommended conditions of approval, and with that, I am recommending condition, subject to the conditions included with your staff report. Overhead, you do have a possible motion, again, with the one revision that I would ask for, and with that, I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions for staff at this point?
Is there a representative, is there going to be?
Is there an applicant presentation? Okay.
Then I'll hold.
Okay. Be prepared to come back.
Certainly.
While we're getting that up on the screen for the record, I'm Dave Snellgrove. I'm the Planning and Right-of-Way Manager for CFA. With me in the audience tonight is the project applicant, who is Chuck Bluth. He'll have some information right at the end of my presentation, so I can be wordy, so I'll try not to be too wordy to leave him sufficient time. Roger did a great job in covering a lot of things, things that I had in my presentation as well, so I'll try and move through some of those areas pretty quick. He identified the location, and one thing I want to point out, locationally, to the southern edge of this property, we're 1,200 feet from Buck Drive and really at Buck and Sky Vista Parkway, Lemon Drive, you have a commercial node that's been there for years and has been continuing to grow. So you have good proximity to commercial services, and we're, from the northern property line, we're 650 feet south of Military Road. Had a couple perspectives. These kind of help give a little better feel. I know some of you went out to do a site visit, put on the approximate property boundary, and you can see the steeper slopes up in the upper left-hand corner there. This is taken from the, them the south on Google Earth. You can see the commercial in the foreground and the proximity of the commercial relative to the location of this project. You can see that there is, there's a rockout cropping, if any of you noticed on the site that. The rockout cropping is a bigger one, there's a smaller one. I think they show in the next picture, too. Those are in the area that will not be disturbed. So it's across the drainage way and that steeper slope, which actually moves toward BLM land on the east. Those will not be disturbed. You see where on the left-hand side of this, the Mormon church is in the foreground. This is a view from the north. And then you can see where the drainage runs through. And as Roger mentioned, that will be unimpeded. We will grade some of that area that's off in the sagebrush and elevate that and putting homes in there, but the actual drainage channel will not be impeded. Where the property line kind of rises up and drops down, that's the approximate location of the largest rockout cropping on the site. The property is in the Reno State Corridor Joint Plan. It is identified as medium-density suburban, suburban residential, which allows up to three dwelling units per acre. The property is located along major arterial roadways, Lemon Drive. We've got about 1,200 feet to the nearest, to the commercial core area down at Buck Drive. It's also only 2,300 feet, so a little less than a half mile down to US 395. The property and this general area is served by two bus routes, Bus Route 7 and Bus Route 17. That Bus Route 7 is served at the corner of Buck Drive and Lemon, so it's about 1,200 feet, and then it's about 1,800 feet to the Bus Route 7, which is up on the Smith's side is the closest one, up Sky Vista Parkway. Both bus routes do serve down to city center, which will allow people to get to a multitude of places in town that are served by buster in close proximity. The street and highway system plan for the North Valley's area plan identifies Lemon Drive as a moderate access control. That's that A6M, if you look at the acronyms on the table below. The TC are identified as traffic control locations. That's both at Buck Drive and at Military Road. I'll talk more about Military Road as I talk briefly about traffic later in the presentation. We saw from perspective view, some of the slopes on the property, we submitted with the application, a slope analysis map, and you can see this has the, has the site plan on the page, and then shows where the steeper properties are, and we are staying away from those steeper properties, especially up to the north and eastern side of the site, with north being on the left-hand side of that graphic. Existing conditions aside, this is kind of an odd photo because it actually includes both Lemon Drive on the left and the north property line. I took it with one of those perspect, or one of those panoramic, and I kind of collapsed it together, so it's a little bit disorienting because it doesn't come in at that angle that's perceived. But that looks across the site towards the north and east, showing both the Silver State Kennel property and also Lemon Drive on the left-hand side. The left, or right-hand picture on this, taken from the center of the site, you can see the relative slope of what we're proposing to build on. It's identified in the, in the North Valley's area plan as, under the Development Suitabilities Map, as being the most developable area. And then there is the northeastern corner, which has slopes, and that needs to be stayed away from, and we are staying away from that and respecting it. The picture here in the foreground, not up at the very top, but it's kind of hard to see, but the rockout cropping shows us what I was trying to, trying to show in that picture on the left-hand side. This is the site layout, and down at the bottom of that is the planting plan in association with each of the, each of the cluster courts. So there will be trees on the cluster courts even though they don't show up in the main site plan. We have pedestrian paths that go out and connect along the drainage way. We also have incorporated the sidewalk along the frontage, and we'll be required to do that per RTC and Washoe County requirements. But one thing that we tried to do is a little forward-thinking. We know Lemon Drive is going to widen out. Lemon Drive needs to widen out. We tried to pull that, pull that sidewalk away and make it more of a meandering path. So when widening is done to that road, and it goes from two lanes to three lanes, if we don't have to do it with part of our project, the Public Works folks or whoever does it aren't having to rip out a sidewalk and then reestablish a sidewalk. So we'll try and locate that appropriately so it can remain in place in the future. They did the same thing when they built the DeAndrea Community over in Sparks, and I thought that was a really good idea that they did. Drainage detention on the site, Roger covered, covered some of this and identified that the engineering division had reviewed this. We're, the runoff that we'll have with the new impervious surface on the site equates to 113,347 cubic feet of required storage. The detention basin has an area of 270,000 cubic yards. So oftentimes, talk about, you know, you have to detain one gallon of water or one cup of water for each cup of water you're running off. We're actually at a, not a 1:1, we're at a 2.38 to 1 with the project. So our detention area far exceeds what the requirement is. And we know flooding's been a big issue out here, and that's one of the things we wanted to try and make sure that we were accomplishing with this. Project access and traffic. There will be 926 estimated average daily trips. Keep in mind, a trip away from your home is one, the trip back is another trip, so that counts as two. So it'd be five, five trips typically for a house, away and back per day. It's just under 10 average daily trips per home. The AM peak hour trips are identified by Traffic Works at 73, the PM peak at 97. As mentioned before, Lemon Drive is classified as a moderate access control arterial. We do have two access points coming out. There's Snowburst Court and Sunset View Drive. Both of those will be required to be right in, right out. And what will happen is all the cars leaving would need to go up to Military Road, and they will make a U-turn at Military Road. And within the traffic study that was prepared by Traffic Works, they put in some geometry. One of the things that they realized, even though I know U-turns are being done there now, it doesn't meet the standard geometric. So with this project, one of the requirements that will have to be met is a modification of that to make sure that it meets the geometric requirements that are, that are necessary today. This project is fashioned after a project, and it'll be very similar, if not identical, in many ways to a project in Sparks called The Preserve that Mr. Bluth worked on as well. It was a good model. I have some photos here, you know, the main street. You don't have any, or you have very few homes that actually front onto the street. They all go off onto a cul-de-sac or a common drive court. Up in the left-hand corner is an actual aerial photo of what this looks like. Roger had the planting and landscape architect rendition, but that's what it looks like in aerial view in practice. And the two other photos are actually photos of some of these common courts and what they appear like. We agree with staff. We believe that all the legal findings can be made for the project. And we did, did mention Roger's spoken to a couple property owners. I had a good meeting with Joe Reinhardt at the CAB meeting. He forwarded a letter, and Roger mentioned that, that there were a number of conditions. I think we had the same ones, the conditions BB through GG, were really fashioned to try and address the concerns that Mr. Reinhardt had brought up. Also, I had a telephone conver, conversation with Dan Harold. He's one of the property owners over to the eastern side of the site. And one of his concerns was that people had been driving across the property onto his property, and I think I've got an aerial map that kind of shows this a little better. Which one shows it the best? Ah, none of them do. Down the south, there's actually a dirt road that goes into the center of his property. And with the development of the, of the project, it'll block that road off. That road will actually be gone. So that'll be one thing that goes away. And also, too, he wanted to know if in the common area that abuts his property, find the site plan. If you look up to the top part of the map, there's two lots that abut the north or the eastern property line. Then there's a yellow area off to the right. That's a common area, and he was concerned of people getting into the common area and going through. And I talked to Mr. Bluth, and he said- going through, and I talked to Mr. Bluth, and he said, yeah, that we would, we would go ahead and fence that. So it'll block off that whole area for people getting through. So some of the things of people trespassing, hopefully will be gone or wholly mitigated. With that, I'll close my portion of the presentation and allow Chuck to come up and explain to you some other components of the project. Thank you.
Yeah, can you bring up the PowerPoint?
Actually, can we get the, can we get the overhead? Oh, you know what? I think they can only have either that on or, or the PowerPoint.
Good evening, Chuck Bluth. In conjunction with this project, we did a similar project, very, very successful in Sparks, called The Preserve. And it was in two parts. Part one was before the downturn, and part two was waiting about eight years to do the second half. But we learned a lot on that project whereby we had two stories in the first half, and we went to all one stories in the 1600 to 1800 square foot size. One of the, the things that we did in the project, and I've done this previously, is what I call a hammerhead, that there's a cul-de-sac, was four homes on the cul-de-sac, and what we did is did pavers instead of asphalt. And the concept of that is, with children, when you put, your houses are all facing on through streets, it's always a risk factor. With four individuals on a cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac ends up an area to expand the open space in conjunction with the homes. So children have a place to play, that's why these lots get small, as you're aware. And by doing that, it, A, number one, it softens the look, or getting away from the asphalt to the pavers, it increases the feel of the open space, and I do have some photos of the homes.
Oh, by the way.
The other one?
Yes.
Ah, okay. That helps. Oh, there we go. The key thing too is, with the cost of construction and all the necessary fees that go into building today, the, in order to make homes affordable, they have to be, the old days of 2,024 square foot homes, it doesn't work today, it's just they're too expensive for a starter home. These will be in the 18, 1600 to 1800 square foot. Their interiors of them are nicely laid out. Again, the reception we had in, at The Preserve is the homes all sold, I think we only had two or three that did, were not sold by the time we had them finished. So it was very well received. At this, this one here is 1,700 square feet. This was the biggest, biggest at 1,900 square feet. And this is a duplicate. And then we had a smaller, we had a smaller one at 1,600 square feet. If you have any questions that I can answer. One thing I'd like to say, I did meet with the kennel, and we had a very good meeting. And it was very clear that I made to him that he's been there a long time, to make sure, it's my problem in conjunction with building homes adjacent to them, because of the, anybody buying the home is going to want to make sure that there's proper soundproofing, and I intend to heavily landscape it. And the fact that the homes will be built 6 to 8 feet lower in conjunction with the soundproofing and the landscaping, we feel that it will take care, and, and again, we've talked about working together in the future, because he wanted to put some trees on his side also. In conjunction with the, I'm very familiar with the access to the lower neighbors' lots. The intention, which will, you always do in a project like this, is it'll be fully fenced, obviously for security purposes for the people within the development. Any questions?
Not right now.
Thank you.
Give us a moment. So do we have any, just for the record, I neglected to tell the community that this is a public hearing, and that I have opened up the public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have Dan and Kathy Harold, followed by Danny Sersik.
I'm Dan Harold. We have property APN 552-18115. I want to start out with, first off, showing, is this not on?
It'll come on. There you go.
The Wild Stallion Estates are other subdivisions adjacent to Golden Valley Properties. They're on the south side of the Golden Valley Properties. They're all one-acre lots that abut the Golden Valley property. This is another phase of Wild Stallion. These lots abut the other properties in Golden Valley, and Phase 8 also is consistent with the same. So my request is to be consistent with, you know, all other subdivisions that are built adjacent to Golden Valley properties and maintain the, the one-acre parcels. You can see right here, this is my property here. These are the properties that, the lots that they're abutting, and they're not one-acre. I spoke with Dave Snellgrove and expressed my concerns, and there is the open property here, this is the open here, but I'm concerned about, you know, there's going to be a lot of children here. This ravine runs all the way up there onto my property, they can access that ravine from down here, and then, you know, crawl up the ravine and get onto my property and get hurt, and then I'll be liable, and I don't want that to happen. The other thing is, you know, I heard both Mr. Snellgrove and Mr. Film talking about the undisturbed area, which is identified right here. It is not so much undisturbed. Here's some pictures of what they've done to date. They've crossed the creek, and, and they've accessed the rock pile, and they've mined several tons of rocks out of this rock pile. So, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, they're saying this is going to be all undisturbed, and they've already gone in and, you know, clearly disturbed, you know, the property that's supposed to be undisturbed. So my concerns are, you know, properties adjacent need to be one-acre, consistent with all the other subdivisions that have been approved in Golden Valley, and, you know, preserving the, you know, undisturbed common areas that are clearly not being preserved. So with that, does anybody have any questions to me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Danny Sersik, followed by Jean Harris.
Danny Sersik, I'm here to express my concerns, as I also have adjacent property. I bought this property a year ago with the understanding and belief that it would be treated like any other property in Golden Valley, having any subdivisions built next to it with one-acre lots. I have some of the same pictures of the undisturbed property that's already being disturbed. These were taken last week. There's actually been more disturbed property since. So since you guys have all been out there previously to see the site, I think it'd be something worth seeing again before you make your decision.
Thank you very much.
Jean Harris, followed by Joan Reinhardt.
Good evening, my name is Jean Harris. I'm a North Valleys resident and also a member of the North Valleys Citizens Advisory Board. I drive by this site regularly, have studied it since the project was mentioned, and I'm confused in one item where the county regulatory zone mentions medium density suburban, which is three dwellings per acre. This tentative map has homes at just a tad over seven homes per acre. I don't know how that occurs in a regulatory zone. In addition to that, as the other residents just mentioned, the perimeter lots, I feel, should match the existing rural county lots. In other words, where they abut existing property should be one-acre lots, certainly not even one-third acre lots, which we see none of. Also, the traffic on 395, is this just one of the elephants in the room? There's already issues. We have an NDOT rating of F on Highway 395 during peak traffic hours. You're just adding more fuel to that existing fire. There's been no resolution on the traffic. And perhaps the largest issue is the Swan Lake flooding. There is, all the engineering that's proposed on all developments that I see, city and county both, mention the 100-year flood plan. Does anybody realize, have we all lived here long enough to know that in the last 70 years there have been four 100-year floods? You can say they happen every 100 years, but history does not bear that. Simply take a look at Swan Lake now, as it was last year, the flooding is nearly as bad. Please, before any more development is approved, take care of the conditions that we already have: traffic, sewer effluent, and runoff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Reinhardt, followed by Tammy Holtstall.
Madam Chair, commissioners, for the record, Joe Reinhardt, co-owner of Silver State Kennel, adjacent to the development on the south side. We bought the kennel in 1989. It had already been a conforming use permitted occupancy since the 70s. We did an expansion. In the early 2000s, we upgraded our special use permit, and there's some conditions in there that we need to meet. And some of that is the, the hours of operation when we have to keep dogs quiet and things like that. We get that dogs bark. We don't like to hear them bark ourselves. So to that end, we built two indoor-outdoor 30-kennel buildings, so that at night, after 6:00 PM, they are locked inside. The peak barking times for us is first thing in the morning when we let them out, and at feeding time around 3:00 in the afternoon. So we want to be good neighbors. Obviously, I don't want this project to go forth, but if it has to, then I think if we can meet the conditions as spelled out in the staff report. Mr. Bluth took the initiative last week to come by and, and meet with me. We had a good meeting, about 45 minutes. We toured up my property, talked at lengths about what the conditions are and how it could fit into our plan, and, and continue to be good neighbors. Sound attenuation is vital. Our concern is if we get too many complaints from residents, our special use permit could be revoked, then we have the loss of our revenue, and we also lay off employees, which I don't want to have to do. We, we made it through the recession with not laying off a single person, when dog boarding and dog training was at its all-time low. We intend to keep that going, we want to keep these people employed and that. So if we can meet those conditions as spelled out, I gave you a letter there supporting that, if it has to go, then that's what we need to do. On another note, a concern we have is the traffic on Lemon Drive. It's a nightmare. There's times when we can't get out of our driveway for 15 minutes. It's semi-traffic going out to the, to the warehouses, the speed limit is way too high for there, it goes from 35 to 45, just past our place, and now we're going to put this subdivision in there. I have concerns about this right-in, right-out. Is there going to be a divider? Where's it going to go? Is it going to go all the way out to Buck Drive? Or is my driveway going to be the turnaround, the U-turn spot? And, and that puts my clients and my customers at risk every time they come and go out of that driveway. So that's, that's the concerns we have. If you have any questions? And I also gave you a document, that's a letter in response to some doc, some correspondence going back and forth that is in the, in your packet of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy Holtstall, followed by Danny Kleas.
This is on your, Tammy Holtstall, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. This is in your packet, it's page 45. It's kind of interesting, after the Lemon Valley Heights and NDEP stating that they requested you deny this project, the Lemon Valley Heights, it's kind of interesting how all of a sudden, staff decided that NDEP wasn't getting the tentative map so that they could do what they needed to do before approval or denial of the project. So that is something for you to be looking at. Again, that goes back to the NRSs and following the regulations before approving a tentative map. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny Kleas, for the record. Told you guys I'd see you more. Anyways, what Jean said, I just wanted to say that's a good, that's what should be done. I live in the back of the valley, so anything that happens in the front of the valley affects me. Another thing that they talk about is RTC. RTC is cutting their buses' service out there in the North Valleys. Since there's only two routes there, nobody takes the bus, they're cutting service. Another one is RTC again, but this has to do with Lemon Valley Drive. They have no plans to do anything with that Lemon Valley Drive until 2030. Are these people going to wait until 2030 to build their homes? I don't think so. This project should be denied. Everybody knows retention, detention ponds do not work. Look at the mess we're in right now. The problem is with them, there's no code enforcement on them. Once they're built, nobody looks at them ever again, until somebody actually has a problem. Case in point is Amazon. Their retention ponds overflow, flood the, flood the parking lot. Yeah, oh well. That just goes right down to us. So the two-to-one, one-to-two, whatever, doesn't work because nobody's there to enforce it. Another thing, what about our schools? Nobody wants to build a school out there. Hmm, where are these kids going to go? Schools are already full. You listen to the parents, the schools are full. There's nowhere for them to go. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment? Thank you. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. I'll start on my right. Commissioner Lawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several questions, so please...
Just roll through them.
Okay. So Roger, thank you for your presentation. Would you please first respond to the comments made in, in the beginning, in general comments with respect to compliance with NRS?
This is a tentative approval. The final engineering and compliance with all applicable codes will be ensured prior to the recordation of a final map. So at this point, if they get a tentative approval, that then gives them the entitlement to go forward, do all of the final engineering, do all of the final studies and all the final reports, and get approval from all of the required agencies. Each of those agencies would be required to sign a JIRA, that is to say a certification on the final map before these lots could actually be recorded.
So I'm understanding your response to suggest that you don't need to comply with NRS in the tentative map phase? Please, whoever can address that, please.
If I can get the overhead. Again, for the record, Dave Snellgrove with CFA. Handy thing about phones, can't make this letter all that big, if you can window in, you might be able to read some of it. My understanding, this came as news to me, one of the first projects that I had back before you a couple of months ago was the Valley Vista project out Sun Valley. And I came to my surprise that NDEP sent us over a letter that said they were recommending denial of the project. denial of the project. There's something new in NRS, and it applies, my understanding, is only to Washoe County because the way they said it, it's counties between 100,000 and 700,000, which only fits our county. It doesn't fit Clark, it doesn't fit any of the smaller counties. What they're looking for is an intent to serve from the utility district. What we got with this, having learned my lesson on Valley Vista, which I got that rectified and then ended up having them give a recommendation of approval because they got the intent-to-serv letter, is ahead of time, we got an intent-to-serve letter. The county took a look at it and said, yeah, we believe that we can serve that, we understand this is a tentative phase, but we got that letter. That's why we have a recommendation of approval. So I don't want this to blow up into anything more than it actually is. It's a new state requirement that came out, by my understanding, in conversation with NDEP. And what they're looking for is a little bit earlier check and balance relative to sewer and water service.
Thank you, Dave. May I continue, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may.
With respect to the undisturbed property, that was disturbing. Can someone address why that property is disturbed in an undisturbed property?
Yeah, we were in the process of removing some of the lower rocks because when the project starts, we want to have the drainage closer to the bottom of the hill there, so it's more controllable. Now it's all over that whole area, so we just want to be able to direct the water and be able to control the water better.
So I'm understanding that you're not going to disturb the property unless you need to disturb the property?
Well, the aim was always to improve the flow of the water coming through the project by moving it over to the toe of the slope more. And the rocks that were taken were rocks that had basically tumbled down and were loose rocks laying at the bottom of that outcropping.
Thank you for your answer.
Pardon me?
I said, thank you for your answer.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lawson, if I may, to tie onto that staff, if you could address that in terms of, this is in a constrained slope area, so there should not be anything happening. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, you are correct.
Thank you.
There was no disturbance when I went out there, which was a few weeks ago. I would say that prior to removal of those rocks, a grading permit should have been applied for and issued.
Thank you.
I am not aware of one being applied for or issued.
Mr. Lawson, Commissioner Lawson, I'll return it to you.
I'm going to let the others have some time, thank you.
Commissioner Hurren. Commissioner Chesney.
Yes, I have several issues. One of them...
Make sure your mic's on.
One of them concerns a sound wall in the kennel. I live in a place where there are several kennels within a mile, mile and a half. I can hear them barking in the morning and at night. And a six-foot sound wall is not going to attenuate those sounds. So I have a concern for the existing business that is there. And if, before I can support any part of this thing, I want guarantees from the developer that that kennel's going to be held harmless.
As I stated earlier, I'm well aware the kennel's been there for over 40 years, and it's going to be my responsibility. And all, anybody buying in there will be notified of it, which that is, the kennel owner wanted that as part of the requirements, which I totally understand. And we'll do whatever's necessary in order to ensure that their budding homeowners are not bothered.
What part of that property is on the, there's, I believe there's one corner of the property right now that's in the floodplain, is that correct?
Yes, where's that?
You got to elevate it? You're saying you're going to elevate it a minimum of one foot? At this stage in the game, you don't know exactly how much you got to elevate it?
Minimum one foot above base flood elevation.
The...
This is a map from the master hydrology study. There are base flood elevations that were taken all the way down, actually off property. This drainage continues on to the north, and there's been a LOMAR submitted up around Lemon Drive. The portion of property where we'd be elevating, we'd be filling in here, and then the drainage channel itself is farther over, it's in that blue line area. We've got lots through here, these on the edge, and then up here next to the detention basin, that those will be elevated to a minimum of one foot over the base flood elevation as identified by FEMA and has been studied by our hydrologist. It's just in this area that we have that floodplain issue where we would be filling.
Let's see. About the traffic study, the U-turns, the right-in and the right-out. Why?
Because RTC won't allow left-turn movements out. It is a, got to remember the terminology, it's a moderate access control arterial, as identified by RTC. This has been, something has been going on, the first time I dealt with it was over on Vista Boulevard between Dist Drive and Los Altos. We wanted to get left movements out for the Rock Church and couldn't get them at that time. It's something that RTC has been utilizing, practicing probably for 15 to 20 years now. The distance between the two intersections that have signals, Buck Drive and Military Road, we can't meet what they would allow to have, i.e. another signal to exit out. Eventually, that road will go, it's four lanes, it's two lanes north, two lanes south, and probably sooner rather than later, it'll go to six lanes. And movement across six lanes without some type of control is a challenging situation. So they're not allowing us to have a left-turn movement out. Therefore, what they'd have to do is go up to Military Road and make the U-turn. The geometrics of that intersection need to be widened out, and that will be the responsibility of this project, to do that. That'll benefit this project and anyone else that needs to make a U-turn there, which ultimately, I foresee that there's going to be a median all the way up from Buck Drive to Military Road, so all the uses there would end up having to go up and make a U-turn and come back down Lemon Drive. That's not a decision we make, it's a decision that RTC makes.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, thank you. Roger, I had a question. I wonder if you could address some of the testimony regarding flooding and drainage out there? Could you give us a little on that?
I guess I would address that by saying that we have experts who have reviewed the hydrology, they have reviewed the tentative map application materials, and they have recommended approval subject to a stringent set of conditions. Boiled down, one of the basic requirements is that the runoff not be increased. As was shown by the applicant, they are putting about twice as much detention, a little more than that, than is actually required to meet that minimum code. What I can say from that is, is that development of the project will not exacerbate the flooding in the lake.
Thank you, that was my main concern.
Commissioner Bruce.
Yeah, I had a question. I found it, I'm trying to figure out, and it seemed to me that there was a comment, but is this property in some way affected by Reno, or, other than just being there, is it a Reno property, or is it a part of the Reno-Washoe corridor consideration?
Yes, it is. We have a joint plan called the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan, is a joint plan between Washoe County and the city of Reno, and it primarily deals with the master planning of that area. It does not directly affect the development proposal that's before you today, but it is within that joint plan area. And certainly, if this were, if they were asking for a change to the master plan, you would be sitting in joint session with the Reno Planning Commission as well.
If I could piggyback on that, too. This application was submitted to the city of Reno for their comment, and I don't believe that we received anything from city staff.
Okay, I'll, if I have any other questions, I'll raise my hand.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bruce. Commissioner Doncic.
Yes, a few points of clarification. Under here, it says master planning zoning conformance. So it says the property is designated as medium-density suburban in the Reno-Stead Joint Corridor Plan, and this designation allows for 1 to 3 dwelling units per acre. And they're only going to go 2.8, so that's not 7 or 8 as was questioned before. Just clarify that for me.
Thank you for that question. Yes, I would like to clarify, this is a common open space subdivision. So what happens is you take the entire acreage, multiply it by 3, and that is the number of dwelling units that you are allowed. In this case, because they're leaving the drainage way and paths and things of that nature, each of the individual parcels are much smaller. The development takes place on a smaller area, but the density is calculated on the entire parcel of land. The number of dwelling units is consistent with the medium-density suburban zoning category.
Can you also, I have another question with that traffic study. Can you bring it up and show us kind of where it is? Because I'm still concerned about this right-out, right-in, right-out only. Can you show us? Can someone show us the flow, please?
Yes.
Okay, so in terms of the right-in and right-out, this is oriented north and south. I apologize, I don't have the other graphics. They were a little more schematic in the traffic study. Anyway, but the two points of access that we have, one at the southern end of the subdivision and one at the northern end, will both be, allow for only right-in, right-out movement per discussion with the county traffic engineer and also RTC and Mr. Lauren Chilson with Traffic Works, and talking to them about the project. So what was required, and what they will direct us to do, is have right-in, right-out only at both of those turns. So if you were coming down Lemon Drive, you couldn't make a left turn in. If you were going out this subdivision, you couldn't make a left turn to go south on Lemon Drive. You'd have to go up to Military Road, and that graphic that I showed, and this was from the traffic study, this is the geometrics at the Military Road-Lemon Drive intersection. So you have Lemon Drive going north and south, and Military Road branches off to the left there. This is where the turn movements, the actual, they put something called auto-turn on here, and they see what the geometrics are for one of the largest vehicles that could go around there, and it's just touching the curb, so there's going to have to be some modification of the curb in that area. Does that answer your question?
That answers part of it. The second part is, okay, if they're all going up there and turning, what's the impact to those trying to get out of the valley now? What part of the traffic study monitored what was already in the Lemon Valley trying to get into town? The impact that would have?
And I know that Lauren had other information as far as, without the project and with the project, and looked at different intersections, and I apologize, but I don't have that with me. That's part of the package.
And I apologize, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I couldn't quite...
Nor am I.
Read it.
That would flow with the traffic light, so it would not interfere. In other words, you couldn't make that U-turn only with the traffic light as folks are moving to Military or going north on Lemon. So it would not interfere with the traffic coming south.
Does RTC have any plans to adjust the timing on those traffic lights for flows?
That hasn't been discussed.
One more question, if I may, regarding the floodplain. So you're planning to elevate it about a foot, which means, I know it wouldn't be at this stage, but for clarification, you have to go to FEMA for a CLOMAR, which means you can't do any work in that area at all until FEMA approves, is that correct?
Actually, to do a LOMAR, you actually have to do the fill, and then they come out and they certify it. Do the CLOMAR F.
This says, this is, I believe this is conditional letter of map amendment, that's a CLOMAR, correct?
Yeah, it's a CLOMAR F is the fill. And let me find that from the hydrology study. This floodplain removal via fill. To remove development from the floodplain, fill can be placed on the site to elevate the portions of the site in the SFHA above the effective base flood elevation. The structures are only being removed, the proposed lowest adjacent grade to the structures... See, I don't think that's the part, is it on the next page? A LOMAR F would be filed once an existing structure, parcel of land has been physically elevated by fill. So the actual fill has to occur first, that's what we've proposed as part of this. And a letter of map revision would indicate that the structure parcel of land is not subject to inundation by base flood elevation shown on the flood insurance rate map. So we'd go out and we'd do the work, and then it would be certified, and then FEMA would have to give the final determination of whether they will make the map revision. But they do have base flood elevations out there, and the rule, the rule and requirement is a minimum of one foot over base flood elevation. That's what the rule is.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I may, turn your attention to page 12 of 18. This is condition 2V, and the condition comes directly from engineering, stating that prior to placement of any fill material within the FEMA flood, special flood hazard area, an approved conditional letter of map revision, CLOMAR, shall be obtained from FEMA.
Thank you.
So that will be a condition that is required from engineering.
Thank you for that clarification.
For staff, Mr. Pelham? In terms of, to have the North Valleys area plan here, and, you know, the overall character statement and the vision of, respect the scenic and rural heritage, respect private property, provides a range of housing opportunities, provides ample open space and recreational opportunities, addresses the conservation of natural scenic and cultural resources, ensures that infrastructure is consistent with development and appropriate in scale and character of the community character, and coordinates resources available with the construction of infrastructure throughout the implementation. This, I'm very familiar with this plan, as you well know.
You are, indeed.
And because I was a part of this plan and its development when I was sitting on the cab. In terms of the feathering of... In terms of the feathering of properties, how was that addressed when this abuts 1-acre parcels?
There are two ways to do that. And parcel matching is one of the ways, and open space is the other. Again, this, as I mentioned in my previous, during my presentation, those two lots will have to be, or actually the configuration of the lots in that corner, I should say, that will have to be adjusted after the tentative map. If they get an approval before the final drawings come in, they will have to provide that, that open space buffer.
That, that open space or a full acre parcel.
I think, I think that it's probably unlikely that they will make those into 1-acre parcels. I think it's probably more feasible that they will put an open space area in there. But yes, they do have that option as well.
Okay. And then with, the other issue is, is that with the Lemon, I mean, this plan was, the last revision was in 2010. And at that point, it made note of limited water resources for that valley. So how is that being mitigated to continue with approving additional developments in that area?
This is within the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. It will have to be annexed into their area. And the applicant will have to provide the necessary water rights from the appropriate hydrographic basins to serve those new units.
And then I'm still very concerned about the grading that is taking place in a slope-constrained area. I'm very concerned. And with this map that is still up here with access and traffic, another area of concern for public safety as well as access in and out of this property is that we're already having to see that this road will have to be modified to allow for a U-turn. For people in the audience, most of you all are very familiar with this because most of you are residents of the North Valley. At Military, doing a U-turn with an, basically an easement road to get onto Military Road so you can avoid the stoplight, there's an issue right there. And then when you go further up to Buck Drive, there's, that U-turn is already regulated during peak hours. So we could create a huge bottleneck with traffic flow. And as it is, with the new traffic light modification that they've done in, at the off-ramps coming from the, traveling north, and then now a traffic light for the on-ramps, I mean, traveling south. And they have yet to put in the metering, which they'll be doing on, onto the access. So we have lots of cars, lots of lights, and people trying to turn U-turns all over the place. So that, that is, at, at present, I can't find an access finding. I can't support an access finding with this development. Do we have other questions of staff, applicant?
Comments?
Comments, yes. Commissioner Doncheck.
I do have a question, Roger.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just, I was looking at my notes. And I'm not familiar with the other development in Sparks, but I'm concerned, I didn't really understand the whiffs, and I was concerned about access to safety vehicles. And we always talk about emergency response. And if the only way out of there is right outs, that again is hampering an emergency response or access or somebody getting to a hospital because they're having to go the wrong direction. So I have serious concerns about that.
Commissioner Bruce, comments?
I, I just, I, I have comments. Basically, you want us to find that the plan is consistent with the master plan and the designer improvements are, of the property or subdivision are consistent with the master plan. I don't find that they are in a large measure because there are so many changes to the zoning in the first place. Changing it from the front yard setback, the et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Further, the availability of services with it being a right turn in and out. I, I think, I agree with Commissioner Doncheck that that is going to potentially complicate a response significantly. I find that the public health, the design of this does not, that it can cause public health problems, both in terms of water, additional water or changes to water flow, et cetera, and the related problems with additional water in terms of mosquitoes and disease. And I know that they're spraying, and they're spraying, and they're trying to get rid of all that. But, and, and it's back to access with the traffic in terms of the problems with public health. I think that even with a major roundabout there at Military, it's going to be a problem. And in my opinion, nobody in this country has figured out how to build roundabouts like they have in Europe. And, and also the access. So I have a lot of trouble supporting this at all.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes, I pretty much agree with what Commissioner Bruce said. I pretty much agree with his comments.
Commissioner Chesney?
I would, I would have to agree with Commissioner Bruce also. I, I see problems with those findings.
Commissioner Hran?
I think that my fellow commissioners have raised some very valid points. I think that one of my issues on this also is, and it was raised, about the neighbor to the south as far as the dog tail is concerned. I completely support the fact that Mr. Blue is an honorable man, and he'll do anything that he can to mitigate that. But he's not going to be there forever. And I'm, I'm not saying anything negative about Mr. Blue at all. I just think that it puts the kennel owner in a very, very difficult situation. As, and I agree with many of the other comments of my commissioners tonight.
Commissioner Lawson?
Madam Chair, I won't belabor the point, but I've heard too many times now, we'll fix it later, to demonstrate that any of the findings are met. I agree with you completely on access. I agree with Commissioner Bruce on the traffic congestion. And although I do think that roundabouts can be constructed effectively and efficiently, they just take a lot of right-of-way. And that's, it's problematic. So I'm curious if this wasn't investigated as a solution. Left turns and U-turns exacerbate potential for rear-end collisions as well as side-angle collisions. And I just have, there's just no way I can find in support of this.
So commissioners, we're at a point of a motion to either approve or deny?
Madam Chair, if I might.
Commissioner Bruce. I mean, Commissioner Lawson, excuse me.
No, he's the handsome one.
No, stop that.
Madam Chair.
I think you need your eyes checked.
I move that after giving reason to consider...
Just one moment, though, Commissioner Lawson, before you go on. Commissioner Chesney pointed this out to me. The case number says WTM 18-004. And the project name is Lemon Drive Estates. But in, within the motion, it says Lakes at Lemon Valley.
Oh. I can clarify, or I'll let Roger clarify that.
Lakes at Lemon Valley is the name of the property owner. The project itself is Estates.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lawson.
I'm just going to go with what I've got right here.
Yeah.
I, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing. The Washoe County Planning Commission not approve tentative subdivision map case number WTM 18-004 for Lakes at Lemon Valley LLC. Having failed to make all 10 findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.608.25, specifically, I believe, I would, specifically, they failed to meet the access requirements.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lawson and seconded by Commissioner Chesney. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now somewhere in here, I'll find my agenda. We're now to item 8A. Mr. Lloyd?
Thank you. This is abandonment case number WAB 18-0002 for possible action, hearing, and discussion to approve the abandonment of a 33-foot-wide government patent easements that are located along all four sides of the subject property. Any approval only applies to whatever interest Washoe County owns in the easement. And here to, to present this item is staff planner Eva Kraus.
Good evening, commissioners.
I'm sorry, Eva?
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Disclosures by commissioners of ethics and expertise? Thank you. And we'll open the public hearing, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Eva Kraus, planner with Washoe County Community Services. This is a request from the, from Mr. Polly, Mrs. Rinn, Mrs. Polly, actually, and for an abandonment on their property. They own a 2.5-acre parcel down off of Mount Rose Highway. The blue lines showing through the property are White's Creek. Currently, there is an access drive to their property from the west. This is a government patent property, so there are 33-foot easements abutting all four sides of the property line. When you have a 33-foot easement, then you have to measure your setbacks from the easement line. And since it's an access, all sides are front yards. So that's now 33, 30-foot setback from the 33-foot easement. So basically, they can't build or use any of the property within 66 feet of the, 63 feet of the property line. The properties to the south and east are developed. The property to the west has access off the same, has a road that provides access to it. And then the property to the north is undeveloped. And that was where my concern came in on whether we abandon this easement or not. The applicant is requesting to abandon all the easements all the way around the property. That would then make the north side a front yard because the neighbors already have a 33-foot easement. So his front yard would be 30 feet, setback would be 30 feet from the north and the south. And then the side yard setbacks would be 12 feet if this abandonment went through. Originally, well, this is what the staff was recommending. I'm going to explain this. Because the property to the north was undeveloped and can be divided, I was concerned reviewing this that there wouldn't be access or that could possibly impede the access to the northern property. Mr. Polly, or actually Dr. Polly, I'm sorry, has spoken with Mr. Dotson, the property owner. Mr. Dotson has called me and talked to me about this. And today he sent a letter saying he is not opposed to the abandonment of the easement. And he is, feels fine that he does have access to his property still. So instead of what I was recommending, abandoning the easements on three sides and then leaving the north, I am now changing my recommendation to abandon all four easement, oh, easements on all four sides with the creation of a new trail easement on that southeast corner next to White's Creek for the park trail. There was notice sent to the affected property owners, which is seven surrounding properties. I had three of the property owners call me and talk to me about it. None of them have expressed concern except for Mr. Dotson originally. And like I said, he did send the letter today saying he is not opposed to this. Legal notice was published in the RGJ. It was sent to all the above viewing agencies. I forgot to add the Parks Department, Parks Department, or Parks and Open Space did review this also, and they're the ones that asked for the easement. Engineering has some conditions based on recording the map and completing it. Fire reviewed it and said that the access is satisfactory. Still has to meet all their fire codes. None of the utility companies responded. But when you do an abandonment of easements, access easements, you still have to accommodate utility easements. So they don't need to be 30 feet wide. They don't need to be on all four sides, but they will have to provide some utility easements. But utility easements don't affect setbacks, so. So staff has, feels that we can make the findings for the master plan. That's not, it's consistent with the master plan. There are no detriments to the neighboring properties, existing easements. Like I said, utility easements will be accommodated, that there are, there is access to the other properties. And the fourth finding is an NRS finding. It's not code, it's basically the government easements are no longer required for a public purpose. So staff is recommending abandonment on all four sides now. And I, I believe you've gotten the revised motion in your packet or in your handouts. But I'm here to answer any questions. And Dr. Polly is here also, if you have any questions with him.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesney?
Just for clarification, on the, on the document that, that I have that shows the easements, it shows an easement to be retained. And on your drawing, it had a, had a X out through it. So are we abandoning all four corners?
Yes, all four corners, yeah.
Okay. And, and then the new easement for the trail?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Conditions of approval.
Commissioner Doncheck?
I was ready to make a motion.
Oh, well, we have to open it for public comment first. Not yet, not yet. This is, do we have any public comment on this item?
I only had a card for the applicant. And so if he doesn't want to speak, that, that's it.
Okay. So we'll close public hearing and bring it back to the board. Commissioner Doncheck?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing. The Washoe County Planning Commission approved, with conditions, the abandonment of the 33-foot-wide easements abutting all four property lines for abandonment case number WAB 18-0002 for Quinn Polly, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.806.20 and a fourth finding in accordance with Nevada Riot provides statutes 278.483.
Commissioner Chesney, second the motion.
It has been moved by Commissioner Doncheck and seconded by Commissioner Chesney. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one, two, six in favor and one opposed. And the record will reflect that Commissioner Bruce is opposed. Thank you. Now we're on to item 8B.
This is a request for a master plan amendment, case number WMPA 18002, a regulatory zone amendment, case number WRZA 18001, and Development Code Amendment, DCA 170008 for Black Rock Storage. The master plan amendment is for possible action, hearing, and discussion to approve a master plan amendment to the Truckee Canyon Area Plan to allow commercial master plan categories and commercial regulatory zones for use types that are, that do not require new municipal services. Two, to add a statement restricting the commercial use types allowed to those use types that do not require new municipal services. And three, to amend the existing suburban residential master plan category of the subject site to commercial master plan category. The regulatory zone amendment is for a possible action, hearing, and discussion to approve a regulatory zone amendment on the subject site to change the medium-density suburban regulatory zone to neighborhood commercial office NC regulatory zone. Approval of this item is subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment being proposed and is also subject to final approval of the Board of County Commissioners. The Development Code Amendment is for possible action, hearing, and discussion to initiate a Development Code Amendment to Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, the Development Code, Article 222, that's the Truckee Canyon Area Plan, by adding a new section, WCC 110-222.20, and associated map, WCC 110-222.20, to allow commercial use types to the subject property in the Truckee Canyon Area with neighborhood commercial office NC regulatory zone subject to a special use permit and only if the proposed use does not require new municipal services. If the amendment is initiated, further possible action to deny or recommend approval of the amendment to the Board of County Commissioners. If approved, recommended, if approval is recommended, possible action to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect. I said a mouthful. And to provide the presentation is staff planner Chris Bronczek.
Disclosures by Commissioners of ethics or ex parte?
No disclosure.
We'll open the public hearing. Thank you.
Good evening. You covered pretty much all of it. So we're here. This is a three-part presentation. It's for a master plan amendment, regulatory zone amendment, and a development.
If I may, please identify yourself for the record.
My name's Chris Bronczek. I'm one of the planners for Washoe County.
Because this is the first time we've seen you.
This is my first presentation to you all. So the property in question is located right off the interstate entrance to I-80. The interstate leads to downtown Wadsworth. We presented this master plan map to basically let you know that any changes made or any action regarding this master plan amendment can potentially impact the entirety of the Truckee Canyon area. And so the parcel that's being proposed for this MPA, RZA, and DCA is 5.4 acres in size, as mentioned, is located in the Truckee Canyon Area Plan and is adjacent to the Interstate 80. It's also directly adjacent to the Pyramid Lake Fire Rescue Station and Stamp Mill Estates, which is an existing residential development west of this location. And it is currently all-zoned, medium-density suburban. As Trevor kindly went over, the master plan amendment is to allow commercial categories and regulatory zones for use types that do not require municipal services. The requirement of not requiring municipal services, which was very important for regional in their review of this plan. Additionally, it is to add a statement restricting the commercial use that do not require municipal services and to amend the existing suburban residential master plan category to commercial. The RZA is an amendment to the specific site, is the subject site, and it's to change it from medium-density suburban to neighborhood commercial. This change will only impact this specific site. And finally, they are also proposing a Development Code Amendment, which will add a new section to the Washoe County Development Code as well as an associated map. And this will allow for commercial use types within the Truckee Canyon Area Plan and within neighborhood commercial, subject to a special use permit. Our GIS staff has kindly created a map comparing the existing to the left and the proposed to the right, as well as the RZA regulatory zone map. As noted, all the land surrounding this property is currently medium-density suburban. According to the Washoe County Land Use Matrix, neighborhood commercial and medium-density does result in a very low compatibility rating. With this low compatibility, there are significant screening and buffering requirements. Additionally, when we went through the master plan and did a review of the master plan, we did notice some significant inconsistencies within the master plan. And so some of those inconsistencies was with Goal 2, which stated that standards ensure that land use patterns are compatible with suburban development and incorporated mixed use. As you can see with the compatibility matrix, that is not occurring. Additionally, within the land use and transportation section of the master plan, again, it says ensure that existing and proposed land uses are compatible. And lastly, Goal 15 states that rural communities in outlying areas and in northern Washoe County are strengthened and protected from incompatible development. This part of Washoe County would be considered rural development. There's one additional incompatibility that we did find in the Truckee Canyon Area Plan, which at the bottom of the slide states that no neighborhood or commercial office uses are known to currently exist in the Truckee Canyon planning area and that all future neighborhood and commercial office uses should only occur in the downtown Wadsworth area to serve the needs of the residents in the planning area. This location is not in downtown Wadsworth. In terms of the public notice in CAD, notice was sent to 36 property owners within 900 feet. The Citizens Advisory Board was held on February 7. It was part of their regularly scheduled meetings. And it was unanimously recommended for denial. There were a number of citizens that did show up to speak at this meeting. And they were very concerned about the regulatory zone amendment aspect of this plan. So one of the things when we're looking at these master plan amendments and regulatory zone amendments is part of the future growth of that area plan. Unfortunately, future growth demand within the Truckee Canyon Area Plan is kind of hard to protect due to the growth that we are seeing within the Reno-Tahoe Industrial Center. So part of our MPA recommendation, our master plan recommendation is, staff is recommending this be recommended for denial. We were unable to make the findings required. And that motion can be found on page 21 of your staff report. Additionally, without the approval of a MPA, a master plan amendment, we cannot recommend for the approval of a regulatory zone amendment. We are recommending that that be denied. And the motion can be found on page 21 of your staff report. And again, for the DCA, due to being unable to find the findings for the MPA and the RZA, we are also recommending that the Planning Commission deny this plan. And this motion can be found on page 22 of your staff report. And so for this part, I'm going to hand over the presentation to senior planner Roger Pelham. And he will cover it.
Good evening again for the record. Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning. One of the principles that we look at in terms of compatibility is the opposite of that. And the opposite of compatibility may be spot zoning. And there was a very detailed analysis included in your staff report. The issue was identified primarily by the District Attorney's Office. And what it boils down to is if the allowed uses on one particular piece of property are incompatible or unlike the allowed uses or restrictions on the surrounding property, that may be considered spot zoning. Whether or not it's spot zoning really can only be determined after it's gone to court. However, this Planning Commission can certainly take that into consideration when they are coming to your conclusion. And what I would like to do is go back, here we go, to the master plan. As you can see, on three sides of this parcel, the land is medium-density suburban. In fact, the parcel is currently medium-density suburban. Primarily, that is a residential zone that allows three dwelling units. The hashed area sort of to the north there is tribal land. And across the freeway to the south, there is actually tourist commercial zoning. That zoning at its closest point is approximately 750 feet away across the interstate and accessed by a different road. So the idea that somehow the commercial zoning on the other side of the freeway would then make this compatible, it is the opinion of staff, probably is not the strongest argument that can be made. But rather, that the commercial zoning with the medium-density suburban on three sides of it and then the interstate on the four side may very well constitute spot zoning. And that is something that we would simply like to warn you of, be aware of, and hope that you would include in your consideration. If this commission makes a determination that this would amount to invalid spot zoning, that would certainly correlate to the finding that the proposal is not consistent with the master plan. And so with that, both I and Chris are available for any questions that you might have.
Questions for staff? Do we have an applicant presentation?
We do, indeed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, while that's coming up. Good evening. My name is Michelle Ramble. I'm with Rubicon Design Group. And I'm representing the applicant for this project. There we go. All right. So again, the project location, we're looking at this one particular site, approximately five acres, a little bit more than five acres, immediately adjacent to the westbound on-ramp for Interstate 80. So anticipated growth in the area, staff kind of brought this up as a point. With the growth of the Tahoe Reno Industrial Center and the housing issues that we're having in Reno and Sparks, people are starting to look to the east. And one of the areas they're looking at is some of these circles. They're very vague. They're not meant to represent any projects in particular. But these are just some of the flatter areas where developers are kind of poking around now. And our project site is within that middle right. One of the reasons that people are looking out this direction, well, there's several reasons. But one is because of the commute currently. The traffic from Reno to and from Tric is becoming an issue. There's multiple accidents per day. There's a lot of issues. So the commute is getting a little tricky. And this would be basically a reverse commute. So that's one of the attractions to looking at this area. So as Chris went through, there are multiple pieces to this. But ultimately, what it comes down to is to change the general plan and master plan and zoning designations to commercial. The first one, to amend the Truckee Canyon Area Plan to allow commercial uses that do not require municipal services. This by itself will significantly reduce the amount of commercial uses that could be put on the property because you can't have a large commercial use on well and septic tanks. So you're looking at smaller, much smaller scale than you could perhaps across the street and across the freeway and the tourist commercial. In addition, we're looking to add a policy to the area plan to further restrict commercial uses. So down to one. And that would be mini storage. So we would very highly restrict what could be built on this property. And amend the existing suburban residential designation to commercial. Also, we're asking to create Article 222 into the Development Code. And that would be a Truckee Canyon Area Plan modifier. There are currently several other modifiers within the Development Code that either restrict use or create some different standards. So we're just asking to add one of those in. And in particular, as part of the language of this area plan modifier, the mini storage use would be subject to a future special use permit approved by the Board of County Commissioners. So that adds another level of discretionary review on top of your normal special use permits. And then the regulatory zone amendment to amend the zoning from medium-density suburban to neighborhood commercial. All right. So again, we kind of, same kind of map you've seen. As staff mentioned, there is commercial master plan designation across the highway. So we would be matching that designation. As far as zoning is concerned, it's kind of the same idea. There is the tourist commercial across the freeway. Instead of tourist commercial, which is a very intensive commercial designation, it allows for hotel casinos to go in there. We're looking for neighborhood commercial, which is a very low intense use. It doesn't allow a lot of your typical bigger-type commercial developments that you could possibly put in there. So to kind of break down things into two different categories, we're going to start with the spot zoning issue. So page 12 of the staff report, and as Roger mentioned, there is some concern that this might constitute spot zoning. Now, spot zoning is very subjective. There's no right or wrong answer to it. Staff's argument is that since it is on the other side of the highway, that we're not adjacent to commercial designations. However, City of Las Vegas versus Bustos, I'm guessing that's how you say it, in 2003, had a very similar case. There was residential property that wanted to be, they wanted to change it to office zoning. There was no office zoning surrounding the property on that side of the street. But there was a large office park on the other side of the street. And it was a wide street. I don't remember exactly how wide it was. But it was at least a four or six-lane road. And the court ruled that the zone change was reasonably possible even though it was not technically adjacent to the actual property line of the property. So the idea of being on the other side of the right-of-way was considered in this case as being adjacent. Okay. So neighborhood and general commercial. When we first talked to staff, they suggested to us, we went and asked them, you know, what kind of zoning should we ask for? And they suggested neighborhood commercial. So that's what we came forward with. Now that, you know, as you know, the staff report indicates that this isn't encouraged. There is kind of an issue of semantics. The area plan, the Truckee Canyon Area Plan that they're using to argue against neighborhood commercial in, not in downtown core of Wadsworth, has what looks like neighborhood/commercial office. I mean, it is neighborhood/commercial office. But we read that as neighborhood or commercial office is the way that it comes across. So depending on how you want to interpret that, one way or the other. But the paragraph, the next paragraph down in the Truckee Canyon Area Plan recognizes that there is a need for future general commercial zoning in the area. And specifically, five acres is called out. So if the Planning Commission feels that neighborhood commercial may not be appropriate, we would certainly accept the possibility of changing it to a general commercial designation if that helps out with some of the issues that are raised. All right. So as Chris told you, there are three basic goals and policies that staff is using for their recommendation of denial. So I'm going to go through, I'm going to lump Goal 2 and Policy 2.1 together. And then we'll talk about Goal 15 in a moment. So Goal 2 and Policy 2.1 state that standards ensure that land use patterns are compatible with suburban development and incorporated mixed use and ensure that existing and proposed land uses are compatible. So the land use compatibility graph, matrix that you were shown earlier does not prohibit low compatibility uses from going next to each other. It states that they need substantial screening. It states that they need substantial screening and buffering. So, and I do have some pictures of, um, kind of a concept idea of what we're looking at in terms of screening that I'll show you when, at the end of the PowerPoint. Um, but with, the site will be heavily screened as required in multiple places throughout the area plan, the zoning, the development code, and the master plan. Then there are some other policies, um, that can be found throughout the master plan that talk about, in general, they talk about, um, incorporating different uses and providing for a, a variable land use mix in, in areas. So just, um, to read a few of them, um, Policy LUT 4.1A, "Provide opportunities for a variety of land uses, facilities and services that serve present and future population." Uh, the next one, 4.1B, "Promote integrated communities with opportunities for employment, housing, schools, park, and services essential to the daily life of residents." And then Plan, uh, Population, sorry, Goal, Pop 0.3, "Plan for a balanced development pattern that includes employment and housing, public services, and open space." So all of those bring together the idea of a mix of uses going together. And, you know, certainly a mini storage or a, in this case, or just other commercial in general, would fulfill the idea of kind of mixing uses together, especially, um, you know, providing services to future population, providing services to the residents of the area. And, um, there will be some employment opportunity as well with the opening of the future development. So for master plan, Goal 15, talks about rural communities in outlying areas. I think this is a little misleading. Um, current master plan and zoning designations are suburban, not rural. So it may not be totally appropriate to, um, hold us to rural standards. But in any case, um, the intent of suburban residential master plan category, and this is on page 48 of the master plan, "The intent of the suburban residential category is to provide for predominantly residential lifestyle with supporting mixed use, non-residential and residential uses, including commercial, public, and semi-public facilities, and parks and open space." So again, we are complying but, to the definition of suburban residential master plan by incorporating different resident, different uses along with the residential. And as I mentioned earlier, the, the neighborhood or general commercial, whichever one we end up going with, um, is less intense than the existing tourist commercial across the highway. And in trying to find a good way to demonstrate that, I, I ran some traffic numbers. So typical uses that would be allowed, um, in commercial zones would be hotels and restaurants and fast food restaurants. So if we're looking at a 50-room hotel, that's 435 trips a day. A 50-seat restaurant is 329 trips a day. And a 50-seat fast food with a drive-through is 1,100 trips a day. For a 50-storage mini, 50-unit mini storage use, it's 14 trips a day. And that's in and out, so seven in and seven out. So you can see that the, the intensity of the uses is much less for what we're proposing than what could, um, be put on a normal commercial property. And then we have another, um, issue to maybe, to bring up. Truckee Canyon area plan Goal TC 3.4 prevents, prevent future residential subdivisions from locating residences next to either Interstate 80 or the Southern Pacific Railroad. An effective shielding and buffering will be planned to provide noise abatement. So with the current designations of the site, with the current restrictions on, um, you know, not being able to build small lot subdivisions without water and sewer, there could be an argument for a taking of the property if, without the suggest, without the requested amendments, because you can't build houses next to the freeway. And as we've established, this is developed, is directly adjacent to the freeway. Um, and like I said, all buffering and screening requirements are going to be met during the development review process, which will be done during the, um, future special use permit application. Okay. Quickly conclude here. Based on other, based on the policies and the goals in the master plan, the Truckee Canyon area plan that I've discussed, um, we feel that this is a logical expansion of existing commercial designations in the area. It does make sense logically. It's a, an freeway exit. It's very common to find commercial designations, commercial uses at freeway exits. Um, it does provide a service to the local residents. It's consistent with anticipated growth patterns for the future. And like I said, it's supported by both master plan and Truckee Canyon area plan policies as well. So really quickly, I do have, let me grab it. One of the concerns that came up at the cab meeting was the look of the building and how they were going to screen it. So I have a picture, this is of what's going on actually on Fourth Street. This was just built. And this is what the applicant is proposing to model his building after. So there will be a significant amount of landscaping. There will be a nice, um, screen wall. And it would, you know, a good quality product. All right. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, um, questions for the applicant's representative? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing item. Do we have any public hearing on this item?
We do. We have Jose Browning followed by Shirley Gutierrez. All right.
So who do we have?
We have Robert Coop.
Thank you.
Uh, Robert Coop, 435 Stamp Mill Drive in Stamp Mill Estates. Thank you for your time. Like I said, uh, like what was mentioned before, at the recent cab meeting that we had, it was voted unanimously by the cab that, uh, we did not want this project, uh, in, in Stamp Mill Estates. Uh, if we could get the top of that.
Flip it.
Does everybody, does everybody know where Stamp Mill Estates is?
Yes.
Right off Exit 43. Okay. Here's a stop sign. Uh, Stamp Mill Estates has 43 house, housing units in it. One-third acre, mostly retired, uh, people. This is the entryway into Stamp Mill Estates. This is the only entry and only exit of this subdivision. Okay. Um, excuse me for a minute, I forgot my. Okay. So right here is the entryway to Stamp Mill. One stop sign on State Route 427. Located, you have to cross Indian, the causeway. You have to cross, uh, a causeway to get into our property. So you are going on Indian reservation land. You go around the S-turf, S-curve. And that, I believe, is where the entry to this Black Rock storage area will be. They can't put it on the highway, the access, because it's the, on the on-ramp. They do not butt up against I-80. They butt up against State Route 427. That's the smoke shop across the street. That's the only commercial property there. As you go in to our area, the first sign you see is congested area. The second sign you see is no outlet. Okay? So a storage unit being put there in this place, which in September, late August, has Burning Man coming through it. For three weeks, you have thousands of people coming in and out.
I'll give you just a few more seconds because you ran to get your notes.
I have the reason why I think they're calling it Black, uh, Black Rock Storage. We're 70 miles from Black Rock. Why isn't it going to be called Stamp Mill Storage? Why? They're catering to the burners. And you all see, these are different storage units that I've been around. Most of them are three-sided. They have one good side. The other three sides are chain link. You have fire hazards here with the tumbleweed. You have wind damage. Most of these people aren't going to be around and in town, they're going to be from California.
To wrap it up. Thank you very much.
We have Jose Browning followed by Shirley Gutierrez.
Good evening. My name is Jose Browning. I live at 630 Slip Mine Street in Stamp Mill Estates. Um, to build on what my neighbor Robert said, our housing development only has one entrance, in or out. There are multiple concerns that I have about this project being developed, namely fire hazard and congestion, fire hazard being the biggest one. This last year, we had a fire that completely encircled, is there a possibility I could get the overhead?
It's on.
The fire went completely around our neighborhood, only because the Reno-Tahoe Fire District was so good at their job. We didn't lose our homes. If a fire were to break out right in this area where they propose, sorry, where they propose to build their storage units caused by an accident or whatever, we would have no way out. Also is the congestion that it would bring in. You're talking about Burning Man. There are times in past years where we had to wait 15 or even 30 minutes just to be able to get out on the road, to get on the freeway or head in Fernley. You're talking now about bringing all the burners in to the storage area. Another aspect of this is crime. I am worried because, let's face it, as Burning Man, there is a significant amount of drug use. As the burners come in to access the storage facility at all hours of the day, they might bring in certain elements and at the same time start camping out in our front yards. It's one concern of mine. Ah, let me see. Well, let's see. Also, I am worried about a possible bait and switch. Once this area is zoned commercial, if Black Rock storage facility doesn't go through, anything could be put in right there. And there is the proposed property to the right of the firehouse, which is this building. And there is my home. I am worried because there was talk a few years back about putting in a sewage treatment plant right there next to our neighborhood. I ask you, would you want something like that next to your house? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, let me get your pen back.
Shirley Gutierrez followed by Ann Owen.
I'm stiff. My name is Shirley Buteras. I live in Wadsworth. I've been there 15 years. It's a neighborhood of families. A lot of retired people and families now that are in some of the rentals, these houses that have been bought up, that have children. We have a bus stop right there at the volunteer fire station that picks our children up in the morning for school and brings them home in the afternoon. I'm not a good public speaker, but please, this is a neighborhood for families. We don't need commercialism in our neighborhood. We like our walks in the evening. In the summertime, the kids can play in the street. We can walk to the little Indian store and we can get a cold drink, a candy bar. We can walk our dogs. Do you know what it's like when Burning Man is going on out there? There's thousands of cars. Can you imagine of them? The ones that have rental units, storage units, coming in and out, in and out? We have one way in, one way out. It's a volunteer fire station. Our EMT services are furnished by the colony. If we had an emergency, God forbid, if those cars were lined up to get into those storage units, bye-bye. I don't have a whole lot to say, but please, keep us a community, not a commercial zone. I'm 78 years old. I want to live my last years being able to walk around my neighborhood in the summertime and take my dog out and go up and down the street and say hello to my neighbors. I don't want to have to go around different cars or the garbage that'll be in the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Owen.
This is the first time speaking with you. Thank you for listening. We're a very small little area out there. Forty-three homes, families, young children to seniors. Uh, I'm still not sure where you're getting downtown Wadsworth. I don't think there is a downtown. We have a post office where we have to go and get our mail. And it's getting out on this highway and going past Alfalfa Fields and going to the post office. And there's not even a restaurant. So I don't think you can consider we're downtown anything. We're, we're rural. We want shopping. We have to go into Fernley. I had to drive into Reno Sparks yesterday to a doctor. So, you know, we're rural and we love our little community. We don't need commercial businesses there. They don't belong there. I'm sorry. We're, we're a community. We're not a business. And thank you all very much.
Thank you.
No further public comment?
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Commissioner Chesney. You said that you had a disclosure.
Oh, yeah. I, I have a disclosure. I was contacted by the developer, the applicant's representative and I didn't have any discussion. I told my, have my discussions here at the meeting.
Okay. I'll start at this end. Commissioner Doncheck, questions?
Not really.
Commissioner Bruce?
No.
Commissioner Barnes?
No questions.
Commissioner Chesney, you wrote things down there.
Yeah, Rogers, I don't see a report from, uh, the, uh, Truckee Canyon cab. What was, what was their, did they review this and?
They did indeed, and that was part of Chris's presentation. They recommended denial.
Thank you.
Commissioner Haran?
I learned a new term tonight. Spot zoning.
Yes.
My reference may, I guess it's the same thing that I talk about when I say partial specific. And that's what I think this is.
Okay. I do have, um, some questions and it may, I, it may be for staff, it may be for council, um, with specifically referencing spot zoning. And if only, if, if this is so constricted to only allow neighborhood commercial and that is not, that is not referenced anywhere else in the area plan, is that not? is that not spot zoning?
So I wrote the portion of the staff report that lays out the framework for spot zoning and how to spot a spot zoning issue and deal with it as best you can. I do think it's more appropriate that you, as the planning commission, make that determination based on those standards.
Okay.
Rather than me telling you what I think it is or what I think it might be. So my goal in writing it that way was to explain to you as best I could the sort of legal framework of spot zoning so that you're empowered to make a decision within that framework. Much in the same way staff presents a project to you and then you analyze it under the findings. And I think that's more appropriate. I do think that the point you're raising is valid and is part of the analysis of spot zoning. You know, how narrowly does it apply? And what are the surrounding uses? And all those types of things are germane to a spot zoning analysis. In this particular situation, the area plan modifier would be even further constricted to allow only a single type of neighborhood commercial use on this particular parcel, which would be mini storage. So all that's relevant to your analysis. And I think that's a more appropriate way for me to handle it.
Okay. And then, Mr. Edwards, with reference to the applicant's representative who said that this amounted to a takings?
So that comment is in response to other provisions in the area plan that talk about, it's one of the goals, I believe, in the area plan that talk about not putting residential next to the freeway, which at an intuitive level makes sense. However, the property is already zoned for residential. And I think generally, and planning, I think, can actually comment a little bit more poignantly on this notion. But generally, in this kind of situation, when you've already got a zoning in place, then it is treated as though you're allowed to utilize it in a manner consistent with the zoning. So in other words, it's like a grandfathering type scenario. That issue is a little bit far afield from the actual decision tonight because there is no decision tonight about whether or not the owner is going to be able to build it out in a residential way. That's not what they're applying for tonight. It is relevant, I think, indirectly. And Roger, I see, is at the podium now. And I think he can probably expound on what I just said on the grandfathering notion. But that's my understanding in these types of scenarios.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Again, for the record, Roger Pelham. And I would agree with counsel. What I would say is this. Because this is already designated medium density suburban, the applicant has, or the property owner, I should say, has all the rights and privileges that are associated with that zoning. If there were certain types of development, for example, a subdivision, there may be a restriction that would come into place. However, that wouldn't necessarily apply to, say, a parcel map. So that would allow, say, four parcels. Or there could be a dwelling constructed on the parcel as it exists today. There may be other limited uses that would be allowed under the current zoning. Generally speaking, it is my understanding, and I will refer to counsel here, but a taking can only, is generally considered to be when all economic use has been removed from the land.
That's right.
And certainly, a dwelling unit could be put there now. Certainly, a parcel map could allow that to be divided into four, assuming all the other generally applicable standards would be met. And certainly, that's another economically viable use. And again, there may be other uses that may be allowed in that zone that are not necessarily neighborhood commercial uses like a mini storage.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards.
I don't have anything to add to what Roger just said. I do want to provide one more point of clarification on my earlier remarks about spot zoning. I think of it in this way. By giving you the legal framework and letting you use your discretion on that, that puts me in a position, if there were some kind of challenge down the road, to be able to mount a defense for the decision that was made. It gets harder to do that if I jump on the mic and say, "This is invalid spot zoning." And then you say, "No, it isn't," and approve it. And then there's a challenge. And then I go to the court and I say, "This is not invalid spot zoning." And the judge says, "But you said it was on the record." And so I'm using this specific example to make that point. I do that frequently with the advice that I give you as a planning commission because I do think in the run-of-the-mill, it's more appropriate for you all to be making the final decisions within the legal framework. And that's what I try to give you. And so only in sort of extreme circumstances would I jump in and say, "Time out. This is flat-out a violation." I'm not prepared to say that in this situation. And I do think there's enough latitude within the legal framework that I've given you for you all to make an informed decision and exercise of your judgment based on that framework.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? In your packet, you do have two sets of motions, remembering that there are three individual things that are being considered here. Regulatory zone. Well, now I'm drawing a blank on all those things. Mr. Lloyd, if it's, there's all, thank, master plan amendment, regulatory zone amendment, and development code amendment, yes. You have a set for denial and a set for approval. So if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesney.
Do we take these individually? Or do we take them? If we dump the master plan, everything falls?
Yeah, if you don't approve the master plan, then I don't think you can approve the regulatory zone amendment.
And the development code.
Madam Chair, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission deny Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA-18-0002, being unable to make the five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110, 820, 15D, including the five findings.
Madam Chair, I second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Chesney and seconded by Commissioner Lawson. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Herron.
I'm going to support Commissioner Chesney's recommendation and motion. And I think that where I, I just have a hard time with parcel-specific changes. The master plans and all these other types of plans, there's a lot of work gone into those. And I just don't think that it's, for the most part, something that I think is within, something that we should be doing.
Thank you. Any other comments before I call for the question? All those in favor of denial?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would recommend that you entertain a motion as to the remaining two components as well.
Okay.
Even though you've already made your decision on the master plan amendment.
Okay. Counsel is now asking for the regulatory zone to be denied and the development code to be.
I'm asking for you to make a motion on it.
I'm sorry?
I'm asking for you to make a motion on it for the record. I'm not telling you what your motion should be.
Okay. Commissioner Chesney.
Can we just add those to the first motion I made?
We've already taken action on that motion. So we need a new motion to either deny or approve.
All right. Item, Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA-18-0001. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission deny Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA-18-0001, being unable to make the required findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110, 821 dot 15, including the seven findings.
Second.
Development Code, Madam Chair, Development Code Amendment Case.
Okay, so.
You can go ahead and combine the two motions and then do a second.
Okay.
Okay. I withdraw my second.
Oh, you got to hold on.
No, so now you can go ahead to include the denial of the development code.
Okay. In addition, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission deny Development Code Amendment Case Number WDCA-17-008. This recommendation for denial is based on the inability to make the required findings in accordance with Washoe County Code 110, 818 dot 15E, including the four findings.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Chesney and seconded by Commissioner Herron to deny the Development Code Amendment and the Regulatory Zone Amendment. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now to item nine, chair and commission items, Item B, request for additional information from staff.
Madam Chair, may I follow up with something?
Absolutely.
A while back, we had requested planned but not built. And we've received that from Washoe County. We're still waiting on some information from Sparks and Reno. So if we can get an update of when we could, that might be available to us.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, and through the chair. This is something we, the Regional, provided a link to all of the commissioners for a map that Regional has actually created. Now, keeping in mind that the cities of Reno and Sparks, their process is quite different in terms of tentative maps than Washoe County's is. Combining them into one map can be a little bit tricky. However, you know, we're still trying to work on that through our GIS. But if you want something in addition to what was provided, we can certainly look into that.
I believe that, just to follow up on that, I believe that in some of our previous tentative map plans, there were pages in there that gave us some of that information. And it's not current?
No, it was just Washoe County. It was just Washoe County, yeah.
Pointing information, the Regional Planning Agency does have, to the best of their ability, a map and a listing of approved, not built.
Of all the jurisdictions.
And it is on their website.
Which Mr. Lloyd provided the link.
And not to get too far down this discussion, but I will request that of my staff, that they provide the documents, the maps, in your packets from Regional for the cities of Reno and Sparks in addition to the tentative maps from Washoe County as well.
Thank you. Any other items, request for additional information from staff? Okay, item 10, directors and legal counsel items. Report on previous planning commission items.
I do have some items to report. The Lemon Valley Heights subdivision that this commission approved was appealed to the county commission. And the county commission affirmed your decision two weeks ago, I believe. Or was it last? It was fairly recent. As well as two development code amendments that this commission recently heard. The one regarding the access easements 20 feet wide creating the setbacks, as well as the clarification for accessory building heights. Additionally, this, there was an additional DCA that this planning commission approved at your last meeting for clarification with public schools, public and private schools. Just for your information, that item will be returning to you. There was apparently a notification or noticing error. So we need to bring that back to the planning commission. And finally, there was a request at the last meeting for an information item from the director of engineering, Duane Smith, to come and discuss. However, through advice from legal counsel, we have decided to table that for now and will bring that back at a later date. And that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Legal information and updates?
I don't have anything else to add at this point.
Thank you. We're now to item 11, general public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have one.
Tom Corson, 150 Timberline View Court, Reno. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. I was at the April 3 meeting. And after hearing the request for an amended master plan and development code to allow single-family residential uses, including mobile homes within a Sun Valley Downtown character management area, I looked into the issue a bit further. During the testimony, it was said that the current code prevented people that live there from improving their homes and that because of the larger minimum size of currently available mobile and manufactured homes, it was a hardship on the property owners. We were also told that due to the small size of the lots, one-third of an acre in most cases in the area, that the intended commercial development has not appeared. I did some research on the property owners in this area and found out that the majority of the properties were rentals and owned by real estate investment groups and not actual homeowners. These properties were bought up cheap and have large cash flows due to the current shortage of housing in the Reno Sparks area. Due to this fact, there is little incentive for these investment groups to move to a more commercial environment in this area of Sun Valley Boulevard. Ron Bell, who testified at the last meeting, is a real estate agent looking to make a fast buck off the property he has at 109 Grumpy Lane. And there is another company, Bridge Carson LLC, that has a mailing address out of Los Angeles, owns over 50 properties in the area. I'm not sure how, given these entities a cheaper route to go and taking advantage of lower-income people that make their living in this area. These companies are part of the reason with the lack of available housing in the Reno Sparks area because they have bought it all up and control it with rental units. Allowing companies to replace older, smaller trailers and homes with new, larger trailers and manufactured homes will only continue the rental culture in the area that tends to be less cared for. Studies have shown that people that actually own their properties take better care of it and are more concerned about the appearance versus a rental that may be there only a short time. I'm glad the board turned down the Planning and Building Division request for these co-changes that would be in conflict with the direction of the DCMA of Sun Valley. I think a good solution for the area might be for the county to relax and make more simple the ability for property owners to combine their smaller lots in this area. Many of these investment groups own continuous properties along Sun Valley Boulevard. Increasing the size of the lots in this area would lend itself to more commercial development as these small one-third acre lots realistically cannot be developed for commercial uses. Tax breaks or incentives could also be offered to these investment groups. They actually pay very little taxes on these properties, generally less than $300 a year, to combine several lots into single parcels, which would be more desirable for commercial development. Allowing larger units to replace current ones means more bedrooms and bigger families, along with more children, to further crowd our local schools. You have the potential to burden the local schools with a $20,000 to $30,000 a year in cost per property for a property that may pay as little as $600 in total property taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I'd also have some public comment as with our joint planning meeting that we had with the Reno Planning Commission. And we were all present. And there are a few people still here in the audience. I just, I applaud all of my fellow commissioners and the City of Reno planning commissioners as well to be able to demonstrate to the public that two bodies can have collegial and respectful debate and support the efforts of our community of the greater Truckee Meadows. So I thank you all.
Observation. It was really interesting that, you know, so many times.
Sorry, guys. But, yeah, don't have a discussion on this.
Just don't have discussion. I just, that's my public comment. Move for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.